So that's why when they say, oh, we need two hundred fifty people, it's all like, wow. Well, we have to account for that people are going to embrace that ultra flexibility that subbing provides.
Okay.
That's, that's kind of a, a key piece and you know, it's different than other employment teams in the district. We need people consistent and reliable every day to come to school, subbing to be in class. Kind of even businesses in the community thing, people every single day sort of thought of subbing as a little bit of a square.
Yeah, sure.
So that's kind of interesting. It's fun. It's a great way to get community members into our schools, into our schools.
Right, yeah.
We got thirty-five locations, so there's gotta be one by your house. So, or one that, you know, appeals to you.
Right.
But yeah, if you don't, people send them our way.
I'm good. Also my favorite topic is one.
It is, it is. If you work on a Monday to Friday, that's two sentences, you get thrown in their name in a hat, then they're on an airport. Oh, okay.
The whole, the whole PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Okay.
Less of overwhelming success than.
Okay, you go to the home.
Yeah. I do that. With commercials, most of them.
Wait, wait, wait. That was the test, test time. He probably need up like eight minutes.
Yeah.
So get back out.
Now here, I know what that image is gonna be.
Thank you. Oh, it's, it's Todd's my favorite gum. Not yet, let me. I'll be meeting back to order. Before we start, I just would like to tell the public that we are all thinking about the families that went in. Sons were in the accident last evening and that it was an email sent out by Dr. Rader, the principal at the high school, providing counseling, other resources for families and students who are affected. We move on to our board work session. Jamie Noel is sitting in for Dr. Magr. He is traveling for the district today and take over.
And I will agree with you, one of the hardest things as a building principal to ever work through is the loss of a student within the student body. And so the care that goes into that and the care that goes for the students and the families that are involved and just incredibly tough time. Our counseling department does a great job working with the students and preparing for them. So, yes, thank you. Remembering that and being able to work for it's the most important thing to do in the spirit of the students. Uh, there are two board work session topics here this afternoon. One of which you maybe have heard commercials on and at different posthues and signs that you've seen throughout the community. And, and a big part of that is the substitutes that we work with and work in our buildings each and every day. This is an area that obviously is a, a great need of our school district is having substitutes within our buildings. To be able to replace those teachers when teachers are either ill or gone. Um, or at other meetings that we have called throughout the, the school year. So Becky Dorman, who is the head of our human resources department, spends a significant amount of time and effort in working with our substitute pool and being able to keep that group into work. So she has a lot of very good information for us today to be able to go through and look at. And, and I think it's been even eye opening and just as our group of human resources and administration to see some of those different statistics and information. So Becky will lead us through that process for the first part of our discussions.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. I really call this presentation the soup to nuts of substitute teaching. Cause it's really a great introduction, a great summary of everything that we have going on with substitute teachers. And I found myself as I was pulling this together, really having a hard time not going off on a bird walk. Because so much of what we get done in our school district has to do with substitute teachers and their availability. As I go through this presentation, if you have any questions, like up on a slide, it probably would work best if you would just ask them at that time versus waiting to the end, because I do have twenty-four slides to get through and I want to be able to address your question. And Beth Chase is gonna go ahead and put this out on the website under the reports, in case you do want to refer back to it later. As we go through a lot of the graphics and artwork you see, I can't take credit for that. This summer, we paired with Town Square Media and they helped us put together some new looks to some eye catching things. Both as in posters and Facebook and social media ads. And then just those, you know, those little annoying ads that you get on your phone that pop up. That's unintentional. So yes, we, we did create some of those. So I'll talk a little bit more about that as we cruise through here. Um, topics we're covering today, you can see we're going just about everywhere from what it takes to be a sub, how we prepare you, and then what are we going to do to address our need of substitute teachers in the district. That billboard probably looks familiar. We had those up for almost two months in eight different locations throughout Sioux Falls. And I had a lot of comments and a lot of applicants indicated on their application that they learned of this subbing opportunity through these billboards. So I think that's something we will definitely keep on the list to do again. Okay, uh, keep in mind, some of the artwork is to engage in emotion, make you laugh a little bit, um, catch your attention. So when it comes to becoming a sub and there's a sub sandwich there, that is to do just that. Your requirements, first, we're looking for individuals with a bachelor's degree. It can be in any area. We also seek out individuals that have an associate's degree or at least sixty credit hours and then a little bit of working experience. Or you can have a high school diploma or GED and five years of working experience to be a substitute teacher. If you don't have the five years, let's say you're a relatively recent graduate, we have worked for you as a substitute education assistant. The path of the sub hiring process, it starts with your online application. Of course, those are twenty-four seven. Once your app comes in, we review substitute teacher apps every day. And we're also looking at the ref, we do reference surveys. So applicants have to provide email addresses and then our application system automatically launches a reference survey. So we gather a little bit of information on our candidates that way. If everything looks good, um, we go ahead and we email the candidate a tentative offer of employment. That would be pending a criminal background check and then going through our training before they can start. They also get the online employment form. So your W four, I nine, that type of information, direct deposit, they get that emailed out to them. And then they also receive a link to schedule a time to come in to get their background checked done in their HR department, take their ID badge and to sign up for one of the orientation trainings that Rhonda Hiddings covers. And we do those pretty much every Wednesday. So this whole process really could take less than two weeks. By the time you will fill out your app, get in for your background check and then get trained. And then once you've gone through the training, uh, you go ahead and you register in your Smart Find Express. That's the system we use to call substitutes and you start working.
Becky, some of those trainings aren't paid as well. Is that correct or is that more disapplicable?
We do pay you to come to your first orientation training, yes. And other trainings we do have are paid. Okay, so I touched a little bit on what is Smart Find Express. The district has been using a software program, some version of it, since nineteen ninety-six to call substitute teachers. It used to be just strictly calling substitute teachers on the phone. Now subs can log in. You can see here, um, this sub has logged in and she was looking for jobs between November fourth and December twenty-third. So she's looking to fill in her calendar so she can find what's available, click on the details to see if she's interested and then sign up and take that job if she wants to and fill up her calendar. There's also an app, so our candidates can do that on the phone. And then in its next release of the app, um, there's also going to be some texting availability. So when a job comes open, if you sign up for text alerts, you'll get a text alert. We're excited about that. We think a, a lot of our subs will embrace that convenience. Let's talk about substitute teacher pay. In most situations, our substitute teachers earn a hundred and ten dollars a day. We do have some priority schools and by priority, that means to the HR folks is sometimes we have difficulty getting all of their jobs filled for a number of reasons. So we have incentivized subs by an extra ten dollars a day to serve at those schools. And then if you are a substitute at Bridges, you get a hundred and thirty dollars a day. There's some extra training that goes into working at Bridges, so we, um, increased the pay because of that extra training. Now comparing what we look like to other districts, um, a, a piece to keep in mind is in Sioux Falls, we're gonna need anywhere from a hundred and seventy-five to three hundred and fifty substitutes a day. So our volume is a lot greater. Your opportunity to work every day, if that's what you wanna do, that's there. Comparing that to Brandon, um, I spoke to him not too long ago, um, they need fifteen to twenty subs a day. Harrisburg needs about thirty-five a day. So definitely volume is, is quite different. In Harrisburg, we started a hundred and twenty dollars a day and then on day eleven, you're at a hundred and forty dollars. Then down to Sioux City, on day twenty-six is when you get to jump to a hundred and thirty-five days. Sioux City really isn't a competitor of ours. I was just looking for districts, you know, in the area, maybe a little larger so we'd have a comparison. And then in West, at West Central, um, I believe on the twentieth day that you get your one twenty.
Do you mean consecutive days for like a long term or just the twentieth job that you pick up over the course of?
Cumulative, yeah, twentieth job.
Thank you.
In Sioux Falls, if you're doing a long-term sub, like if you're applying on maternity leave, um, those types of jobs pay a hundred and thirty-seven dollars a day. We're gonna dive into a little bit about our subs and some stats and then a little bit more about our sub pool. We do have five hundred and fifty substitute teachers. On the average age is forty-five and about forty percent of them have a degree in education. And people typically work for us for about three years as a substitute teacher. Here's the breakout of those five hundred and fifty-three looking, um, last school year from October through May. And I pick October because that's when things really start rolling in the sub world. It's really not fair to include September. It throws off all my stats. So, um, what we need to have happen is all the subs need to take a big old step to the right. So they're all working more days. So two hundred and thirty-seven subs work anywhere from one to sixteen days. So, um, we definitely have people working. We just need to find ways to have them work more. Cause we have the numbers. We just need them to work more. And that was an eye opening piece as I was pulling together a lot of this information. The five hundred and fifty-three, um, averaged of working thirty-two days a school year. That's, subbing flexibility is one of the greatest benefits to our candidates or subs. But one of our biggest hurdles is the flexibility that subbing offers. Seventy-two, um, of our subs are retirees, are former retirees. Come from our, our teaching ranks and they sub an average of twenty-five days during the school year. When HR people get together and brainstorm ideas about substitutes, as we do, uh, it's a problem for us all. We talk in terms of fill rates, meaning how close did we get to filling all the sub jobs today? So I've got the past three Octobers laid out there. In October of seventeen, we, our fill rate was ninety-four point three percent. We averaged two hundred and eight sub days needed each day. So that meant there were twelve classrooms that went without subs each day in October. Now that doesn't mean they weren't manned with people. It just means schools get creative and they cover that vacancy. So you can see that our fill rates have dropped a little bit each year. I was just at a consortium meeting, um, with several other school districts and we're all shooting for ninety percent. We feel like that's kind of the industry standard is to hit ninety percent a day of your jobs filled. So we just, we're real close with that line this year. So we're putting some efforts in place to get over that ninety percent. Last school year, um, when we noticed the dip in the fill rates, um, one of our strategies was to figure out, how can we get the subs, the five hundred subs that we have, how can we get them to work more? So we surveyed them, figuring we already knew the answer. But, uh, we did survey our subs last school year and seventy-one percent reported that we needed to increase our pay. Also offer benefits, um, provide some additional support and then increase our substitute appreciation efforts. So to address the pay issue and to further test the pay issue, if you will. So to address the pay issue and to further test the pay issue, if you will, we created the Cleveland Pay Pilot. And that ended up supporting the survey results. We increased sub pay from the $110 rate to the $150 rate. And Cleveland's fill rate went from 81% and that was the lowest in the district when we picked Cleveland, to 89%, which was very, very close to our district average. So we felt that that was okay. That was a positive response. That 125 might be the right rate. And it was because of this pay pilot, we knew of its success, that we brought on those five more schools this year and increased their pay some as well. Well, from the survey, they wanted health insurance. That's insurance and retirement. You know, typically when you're looking at a position, that's an additional 33% of the wages of that position. So, but yeah, there's benefits. When you're talking about substitute teachers, you have to look at the other side of the coin and that's why do we need these substitute teachers? So we had to take a look at our teacher absenteeism. Where are we compared to every other district in the nation? So we did some research on that. Everybody has different... It was a little bit difficult to compare apples to apples, but I think when we focused on sick leave utilization, so that would be personal sick leave and then a sick day taken because maybe you have an ill child or an ill family member, we found that we're doing better than the rest of the nation. Our teachers are out an average of seven and a half days during the school year for illness-related reasons. Where the national average was 11 days, according to research from June 2014. And then I found a little bit more research, a little more recent research where 28% of teachers miss 10 days or more. Ours is 22% miss more than 10 days. And that would be just sickness and sickness and family. Okay, another reason why teachers are out of the building has to do with when their administrator or a central office administrator says, "I need you here today. We're maybe going to do some curriculum review. We're doing some training, what have you." So that's what this chart shows. The legend, I'll start by explaining what those letters mean. A PADD is a Principal Authorized Building Day. And that is the first layer of green down at the bottom. And that would be, you know, each school gets designated days in which they can use them for professional development or, you know, anything that they need when they need a teacher to do something instead of being in the classroom that day. The next small strip of green is regular duty out of office. So that would be, for instance, if you're a high school teacher and you're taking one of your classes on a field trip, but you need somebody to cover the rest of your classes that day, that would be regular duty out of office. CAA, which is the big section of blue, is central administrator assignment. So when you see IPC is full, sometimes when you stop in and teachers are gathered around tables, that's central administrative assignment. And then the purple, which is the top, is collaboration. So a principal wants to pull a grade level of teachers together for a day or two during the week. They need substitutes to cover that classroom. So that's what that looks like. We're down, we're down just a little bit. 18, 19 was down just a little bit. We have fewer of those absences. A lot of this ebb and flow goes with what's happening in curriculum, what trainings do we need to have typically. So now we put the district and central office reasons, combine them with all other absence reasons. The sick leave, the personal days, funeral leave, you know, any reason why you would have to be out of the office. And you can see that it's just right around 15% of the time that a teacher's out of the classroom is because of those principal or district selected days. In 17, 18, we needed a total of, that number is 26,321 sub days. And then last year it was 25,836 sub days. And those are teachers and those are the education assistants who needed a substitute when they were gone. So once you become a sub, how do we prep you for being in our classrooms? The first thing that we do outside of your orientation or after you've completed your orientation is some online learning. And it's an eight to 10 hour course that we pay you to do. We give you a $50 stipend to do it. And it's just an introduction to things that you're going to run into when you're in a classroom. And then when you're done, you're issued a sub diploma. So it's just a good way for people that have really never been in a classroom other than their own learning experiences to get reintroduced to what school is like today. And we purchase these through the Substitute Teaching Education Division at the University of Utah. Some other prepping that we do is they have a policy review, which Rhonda goes over with them annually. They also undergo school safety training from Bob Ray. That's part of their orientation for all substitutes. And then again, annually, they come in and meet with Bob so they have the school safety training, the same that our teachers would get. And then based on that survey, they wanted some more information about classroom management and dealing with behaviors. We have our instructional coaches have prepared a two-hour seminar that they offer four times a year for substitutes to come in and be part of their seminar. And then we also have a retired special ed teacher coming in and he is doing, you know, how to be a successful substitute. And then we also plan to do some classroom technology training, increasing the rate of students. And all of these are paid trainings for our substitutes. I touched on a little bit. We've done some new recruiting this year. And then we also kept doing some of the stuff that was working for us. We have had a lot of success with the online pop-up ads that come on your phone when you're searching for something else. As a matter of fact, right now, we're doing 5% better than what the industry, or five times as good, as better than the industry says we should be doing. Which has resulted in 20% more applications than we had last time of this year, or last year at this time. And there's some, every other month, we have new ads that come up just to keep them fresh. That third bullet talks about a site conversion. And that would be, we know the people that get the pop-up ads on their phones and we know if they clicked on those ads or if they didn't. But then again, we also know if they went and they searched later on their phone, it's to call students. And that's why the site conversion works. So it's pretty exciting. They might not click on our ad, but they are still interested, you know, hours later and they'll Google us or look us up. So we did some more radio ads. They're still playing. They'll be playing here through most of November. We were able to do a radio feature where we were interviewed on the radio. So that was, that was kind of fun. And then also, you know, every time something happens, we are in the media as far as substitute teachers. I've done a lot of media stories this fall. So this board presentation probably helped with that as well. We always get more applicants as soon as people start talking about us or they see a little something in the paper or on TV. So. This is a look at, you know, how these recruitment efforts shake out this year with our current applicants. And this data is from the middle of October. I started pulling it. So we offered 290 sub teaching jobs. From there, 162 signed up for training. And then after the training, 128 registered in the Smart Find Express to start taking jobs. So what that shakes out to is 44% of the people that we hired actually came to work. So that's a piece that we need to continue working on, is to keep people engaged through the whole process. It makes a little bit more sense when we start seeing who we hired. For instance, 28% of the 290 had come from the field of education. So it's very possible that we've hired them to be education assistants or another district has grabbed them to fill a position. The unemployed number surprises me. 26 of the people, 26% of the people weren't employed and were looking for employment. And we do get calls, you know, almost every day is, "I won't be on the list. I got a job. So someplace else." So that is still, we're still that gap filler for employment. So that causes some turnaround. Sales, healthcare, retail, childcare. And then the other is, you know, anything you can possibly imagine with these professions that come to us. So that's really great. As we wrap this up, there's some directions that we want to go, that we're really focusing on, that we think are going to help the whole substitute teaching programming in general. And the first piece is sharing what we know with our own administration. So right here, we have just a snippet of what October 14th through October 19th looked like in terms of who was gone or not, why people were gone. So if you see where that red arrow was, on Monday, October 14th, there were 44 unfilled positions. That's, that's a big number for us. So when we send this out to administrators, they can see how that 44 came to be. Helps them to kind of get a big picture. I had a lot of comments from administrators saying, "Oh, I never realized this." Or, "Can I share this with my teachers? Because they'll want to see this." I'm like, "Sure." So I plan to send out a couple of these each month, just to keep principals engaged in the absenteeism and substitute mood of the district.
Can you get this down to the building level?
I can. I just haven't gone there yet. It would be fun to do some challenges or something like that, though, wouldn't it? Really got kind of a fun thing, a goodwill, make you feel good about being a sub. This is through October and November. If you sub on a Monday and a Friday, two times, you get to remain thrown in the hat for a drawing on that next Wednesday to get an apple airpod. So we've given out two of those so far. That was a lot of fun. We launched this right before I went to, with the other central administrators and Dr. Maher, who are consortium leader in Millard. And we had two other school districts that took this and even wanted the graphic. They wanted it without the logo. And I'm like, "Well, you can take it. You have to figure out how to get the logo off there." It's just, it's just created a lot of chatter and fun about being a substitute. So we hope to do more things like this. Another key piece is we know we have to do some process changing to keep those 290 applicants that whittled down to 126, to keep them engaged in the process. So sending phone calls, email and texts, just being really intentional about reminding people how important we need them or how important their work is. We also are working on setting sub goals and with rewards for increasing the frequency of people working. We have enough substitutes. We just need those that are working for us to work more. And then we're also creating district cards for district staff and plan to hand out to administrators. So whenever they find they're in a conversation with somebody that's got some time on their hands or asking questions about subbing, they can say, "Here, have you thought about this?" Or, you know, "We'd love to have you here at Roosevelt, even if it's twice a month." You know, just kind of conversation starters or just something to give them to think about substitute teaching. And the last area of focus, I'm calling this a success, a success story. But I really have to give credit to Dr. Knoll and USD. This is the Prepared to Teach Pilot at Rosa Parks Elementary. This year, we have six student teachers that are in year-long placements at Rosa Parks. After they were in their student teaching role for about six weeks, they are then set free to sub at Rosa Parks as needed, going to other classrooms. And they also get paid as a substitute teacher by the district, because they're covering a need that we do have. And they also are receiving a stipend from USD through a grant that USD receives for this program. The feedback that I've gotten from the principal was overwhelmingly positive. There are some things that we are going to tweak. We'll do this again next year, but it seems to be working out nicely in the schools. One of the key pieces that her student teachers slash substitute teachers have commented on is they can get like immediate feedback when they go into a different classroom and experience a different environment on, you know, what they could have done differently or they come back the next day and talk to their mentor teacher and said, "You know, I experienced this behavior. How can I address this next time?" So it's, they really have that support that they need. So they're going to really flourish in their role.
This, I just think is awesome that USD and the district is, is this going to be able to be replicated by other schools like USF or Aggie and Mississippi State and Mississippi State?
Well, I do know that USD came to us. Is that correct, Dr. Knoll?
They presented that because one of the difficulties in a year-long placement, I think it's the best process because, that does, and that's that in the elementary setting, because the substitute, or the student teacher district experiences through a year. Now, difficulty in that is when you go up to student teacher, you usually will give up your job or a job that you may have. So there's a financial hardship in that. So for them to do the stipend and us to be able to supplement that with, you know, four, five, six days of substitute teaching, so it can be $500, $600 a day or more, plus the stipend that they get right away to start with, that helps those, those individuals to be able to pay the bills and things throughout the year. Now, most of the other schools are still doing the semester phase. So we're having some conversations down in, can they and will they be willing to allow their substitute teachers to sub? Because some have still a stance that they cannot sub. So we need to work through some of those processes. The first part was to both risk to make sure it's either a work and beneficial and it has helped cover subs in that building. So I think that helps us in a dialogue with the other schools, universities. We all say, "Hey, this is working. This is something that will help us in terms of student teacher."
One of the other comments I got from, here's to Maher, check the principal, is just the student attitudes toward the student teacher slash sub. They see them as teachers because they're in the building all of the time. So that sub behavior isn't there as much.
I would think too, if I were a student teacher, what a valuable opportunity to be able to say, "I did my six weeks in kindergarten, but I also got a chance to spend, you know, six or seven days throughout the rest of that year in multiple different grades. And I realized I love this age and this age is not my favorite," or whatever. So that when you're applying for jobs, you are going to pick a job that's more aligned to your skills and your interests and your passion because you've been there and done that versus thinking, "I don't know. Well, once I had a niece that was a third grader and I thought she was really cool." You know what I mean? Like I feel like sometimes what are you basing your decision off of? But having actually been into the classroom and worked with students of that age and understanding the expectations and what they are capable of doing can really help you to have a better placement when you're done and actually looking for your full-time job. And hopefully we're too, and a lot of these teachers too, that sub for us and they realize that the Sioux Falls School District is where they want to be and apply and get hired as well.
Absolutely. Yep. This is, this is a great, a great step. It solves a lot of issues, creates some solutions, definitely. Well, that is the end of my substitute teacher presentation. Do you have any questions?
So I will go back to the issue or the question, you know, benefits. We all think the substitute benefits. But I'm thinking bigger picture, like, so we have employees in our district that they work three days out of five, they can qualify for benefits. Is that correct? It is 15, okay. And so if there would be a way for substitutes, if we could contact with them, if they did that many days per day, you know, come up with a formula. I'm wondering if that would be something to solve this issue that would do that. Because I'm sure there's some buildings that have a substitute every day just because of the size of their staff and them. And to have them specifically focusing on that building, I just think it would open that other issue of substitute behavior as well as they know the systems in that building. And so is that not that? and so there's that, not that learning curve every day when they come into the building. So I think that would be maybe something for this thing.
Are you tapping into the retired? It was two percent, right?
The, the two percent of our applicants were retired. Right now, we have seventy-two former Seacoal School District teachers in that pool. And, and we do see a lot of times our retirees will come back and they'll work for their school or, or their friends.
And only their school.
For, for a year or two, and then they're, they're ready to re-need to retire.
And we'll still need those, that sort of things, long-term.
Yeah, Becky, thank you for the presentation. And that too is a common thread that I heard with you is the, how do we incentivize? Is the overarching goal and, and within that, how do we get those working for us currently to work more? So that again speaks to the incentivization. And so then to Cynthia's part, is there, are there benefits that we can extend to substitutes? You know, what in addition to those, the pilot school that you used when you increased pay from one-ten to one-twenty-five and that that did increase the fill gap from eighty-one percent to eighty-nine percent? So, and then you extended that to five more schools and there again, it sounds like that research or it's fruit in that those fill gaps were made. So if you want to look at that bigger picture, since I'm, I'm sensing from you, it is something of importance of filling those, the substitute positions. And so maybe how we could look at the incentivization, when really focusing on that. We've done that with pay, but what else could we extend?
Can we go back to that five FTE question? Was that a survey that you did that, that the substitute said, do we work more if?
Yes, that was, I did a survey, I think, it was last winter, we did a survey.
They only get benefits if they work, you know, so what was the fifty percent?
That's if they work twenty hours.
Okay, okay.
So what would that look like if you were sub that put in however many hours that would equate similar to what an EA would equate? How benefits could be extended? And then what that would do though to the overall budget? That's a bigger piece. And how, what is the budgeting shortfall when we do not have gaps that have filled in the classroom? You know, what does that mean to that building? What type of disruption and what is the value of that? We have to compare that to what it means to fill those.
My question would be is what would the difference between having a, having a substitute who agrees to work, whatever it is, point-five FTE? What's the difference between then just hiring them as a point-five FTE and saying, you are assigned to these three or these four, or however many that is? Like you're an elementary person, you have these four or five elementary schools and you're a point-five FTE. What that means is that our expectation is that you are going to fill in and sub for these designated schools that you've been put into for this many days a week or this many days of pay period or whatever that looks like? Because then I think you actually are an employee and you would have all of the rest of the benefits, it's just that in order to do that, you have to commit to be that point-five FTE, yeah.
At this, at this point, it doesn't seem necessarily we have marketing issue in that we have enough subs, but it's to get those that we have working more, working more.
And then the, the whole budget piece with adding, adding benefits is, is another piece to consider.
And just the logistics, I mean, working on insurance, my size, I can't even imagine trying to offer health insurance to people that work temporarily.
And also I'm thinking like, so they take out of a monthly pay period, but you don't know that they're going to come back next month, you know what I mean? Like there has to be some sort of a level of commitment in the contract that would say, I don't think you could do it month to month. I think it'd have to be a semester at a time or a year at a time where it would be worth the while of the processing and the setting up and all of that. And then I think they'd have to do it for long enough to truly see the value of it to, to make them want to continue. I think there's lots of creative solutions and it sounds like you have people who are kind of looking into those and we've thrown a few random scenarios out at you too. So I think decisions can be made and, you know, again, looking at budget and, and creative solutions that there are ways we can hopefully help to address some of that. And I think it's so important, I was thinking about the training that you do and that's so important for those people, like you said, the twenty-eight, twenty-six percent who are unemployed, who maybe have never been in a classroom. And that is so important for those people, but on the flip side, that's so important for the students that they're serving, that they get somebody who knows how to run technology, knows how to manage a classroom, because otherwise it really is a wasted day. And we, for the number of substitutes that we have, we can't afford to have wasted days in our students' academic lives. And so continuing to do something creatively, like you said, you're going to do a technology one later on, great. Are there other, if you do a survey again, what are some other topics that those teachers would find benefit in having additional resources? Here they say on classroom behavior, so that's great and you were able to do that. So are there other things after they've gotten some of these trainings that now or maybe that next year of, gosh, I wish I knew more about whatever? And so continuing with a couple hours here, a couple hours there can really add up and give people confidence to be able to go into a classroom maybe more often because they feel like they have the skills and the knowledge to do so.
And a lot of the information, stuff that we'll take back and process through, because it has come in quite a few different formats with, with the pilot program that, that Rosa Parks and, and then pay increases at specific areas. The recruitment obvious has been outstanding and even just some of the feedback and old Becky has commented that it, it helped her to realize we have probably enough, but how do we extend them into more days and how do we look at that? So a lot of good pieces of information and also a lot of training that goes on with our substitute to make sure we go prepared, like you said, to make it a meaningful day for our students in classroom. Because even, I mean, you see the number of the average days gone by future, it's important to make sure we fill that with somebody that can keep that going. We do have a.
As I said, I have to look at legislative items. Thank you, Becky, and thank you to Rhonda as well on the teams.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good information.
The second topic on there is the legislative update items for the 2020 legislative session and Todd will lead us through that.
Let's, legislature is around the corner, need to approach it. Valuable Assembly, this is, I think I use this as a guide. Those are, what I passed out first is the new resolutions, going to change once, obviously, because you need a year. Second is starting to do, they're actually, the resolutions for, just to get to a few of it. Yeah, everybody kind of looked at their area and kind of their comments, we didn't have the time to comment on this, but.
Yeah, I am.
That's next Friday.
Yep.
So we had comments on just a handful of the reason why, that's kind of good, we have most of the attributes or, so I'll talk about that. So I just pointed to where we had a few comments, we find B eight, the legislation, let's go with the target. B eight?
B eight.
Do they go on financial protection?
Yes.
It's just a minor. Oh, thanks. We can't afford batteries because we're spending too much on subs.
We're saving them.
So we, we, we just have a slight change to that and it's in, it's in, a suggested change. And it's in italics is where it says under the rationale, there's precedent in law related to this, where the state's attorney would represent the school district at no cost should be sued for complying with the state statute related use of textbooks or the display of the national motto is a, is a new one that could be added to that, maybe not a big deal, you know, when you're out there, if you want to suggest that change or not.
And you know, I can try to bring it up at the board.
Ahead of time.
On Thursday, but it might be something she's going to put in.
Right, and it's nothing to die, you know, it's not a hill to die. These are all slight changes.
Starting in states actually, at least two.
Yep. So that's one. Another one on B eleven, that alternative instruction. We would suggest not pushing that, we're kind of neutral on that. We, we think there should be accountability, but whether the locals should do it or the state, I think is our question, actually Dr. Knoll had analyzed that one. So it's more, maybe it should be the state rather than the locals should investigate, investigate that because who knows that he's got nothing to do.
We accept those in right now and it's, once we accept those in, it's, it's automatically been classified as home school. So now you have that responsibility and that time used to go and investigate situations could be sustained.
So then if you go to C three, this is one we've kind of always talked a little bit about, the two-year enrollment averaging, used to have that for about ten years at the state. No problem, that, it helps schools that are declining. Don't disagree with that theory of that. However, when they did the major revamp, you know, they did the half cent sales tax and added about sixty million dollars to local need in the, in the, all the, all the districts across the state, the small school factor went from twenty percent to twenty-five and they funded that by trading it out for the two-year averaging. So I would say, you know, if we were going to push hard on that, you might get a, you might have to look at that small school factor because otherwise it's going to be coming from the pot of money that would go to everybody, including those that don't believe it. And so that's why we're a little bit lukewarm on that. Then I'm going to skip over C four because I want to talk a little bit more about that in a little bit more depth and then go to C seven. No problem with the concept on C seven, but if you look in the rationale, it says, with the exception of FY twenty-eleven, twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen, they've honored the inflation factor, which we have long argued isn't enough anyway, through inflation, whichever is less, but at least they've honored it. However, it wasn't twenty-eighteen, it was just low that year, it was point oh seven. It's twenty-twelve, where we actually went backwards eight point six percent is what it is. So we just put in here swapping out twenty-twelve for twenty-eighteen on that. Nothing controversial there, I don't think. And then if you go back to C four, that's an issue capital outlay where most of the education lobby's kind of been focusing its efforts. Dr. Knoll attended the large school group and had a, quite a vigorous discussion on that. I attended a, a group of, that was pulled together by ASBSD and SASD where we talked about it as well. And then some of the other groups are discussing it. And right now, actually, as we speak or soon, if it hasn't already started, some of those groups are, are live and on a phone call with Secretary of Education Ben Jones and an individual from the governor's office is meeting to discuss different ideas that, that came out of these groups. And I'll just kind of talk about the one we ended up with in the, in the group I met with last week, which is, first of all, when we, when the capital outlay levy went from, it used to be three dollars per thousand, that was the one restriction on, on schools. And then as part of the twenty-sixteen legislation, they, they said the three dollars is still a cap and there's going to be a new one and it's the lesser of the two. And it's, you could levy what you levied, were allowed to levy the prior year, you didn't have to levy it, but what you allowed to levy the prior year. Then you could grow that by three percent inflation, whichever is less, plus any new construction we had in your district. So for instance, for us, that's lowered our maximum levy down to about two-seventy-two, right in there. And across the state, that's different. Like Aberdeen, if, if you just use that and at the three dollars, theirs would be slightly above three dollars. So their, their new, their, their new construction hasn't been overwhelming. And then in other districts, it's down to two-forty, two-thirty, depending on where you are. And then there's a third cap that comes in next year and it mostly applies to small districts. There's a few big ones that have really large tax base, but it's twenty-eight-hundred dollars per student as another cap. So it would take some of these school districts, real small ones that have a hundred or two hundred kids, and their levy would drop, their allowable levy would drop from maybe two-seventy down to fifteen cents. That's how, because they have very large ag bases and they don't have a lot of kids. And so that, that is an issue that's facing about seventy school districts. So what has happened since twenty-sixteen with these different caps is that the cap, the, the, the prior year max plus an index factor plus new construction, that is, that is reduced taxing authority by about twenty-six million dollars since that time. And then the, the, the cap of twenty-eight-hundred dollars per student, and there is a, there is a, there is a little escape clause from that temporary, whereas if you had capital outlay debt prior to twenty, July one, twenty-sixteen, you could levy for that plus twenty-eight-hundred dollars. And I don't know what the capital outlay debt is in those schools, so I don't know that. But I do know that it'll eventually go away, you know, if capital outlay certificates get issued for twenty years. So by twenty-thirty-six, those will all be gone if nothing changes. And if that were all to kick in next year, that would be a savings of another forty-one million dollars. And I'm not saying they're all levying it, but what they could levy. So, you know, that's sixty-eight million dollars, potential savings in capital outlay. That's more than what the increase was to schools in the general fund that had, that happened with that same piece of legislation. So with that in mind, schools are trying to go and, and kind of make a deal with the administration and what they could, could live with as you look at these schools. And, and kind of where our group ended up with is you drift down from your three dollars, but you would have a new floor there of two-seventy-five. And, you know, that would, so that would allow us technically to go up three cents. And then other schools as well. And so don't know a hundred percent if, if they would be, you know, the administration would be interested in saying, yeah, we'll let some of these school districts increase their taxes. You know, that's kind of where, that's the discussion that's going on today and they're trying to find out tomorrow what, what came out of that. But, but that, and then for the twenty-eight-hundred dollars, that was based on an average of fourteen-hundred, they just doubled it and that was like a twenty-fifteen average, maybe even a twenty-fourteen average. The average right now is eighteen-hundred, so I think they're going to propose maybe instead of twenty-eight-hundred, be thirty-six-hundred dollars. Would give them more, much more flexibility as well there. Don't know what's come of that because it's going on right now or it's going to start here in a couple of minutes. But trying to do something with these where we've reduced, definitely reduced the property, the capital outlay levy in the state since that legislation passed and maybe we can settle out on a new, new number going forward. One other thing, there's a few districts out there, there's about fifteen that are, that are, don't have a property, any significant property valuation. So we're saying if you're below fourteen-hundred dollars per student, and that's fifteen school districts, you could go back up to the three if you, and not at the two-seventy-five or whatever that would be. So that's what they're working on, trying to come up with a, we can all agree and then maybe go forward with some legislation next year. And you'll probably hear more about that, Cynthia, next Friday where they kind of landed on that. I'll try to find out.
And I can ask some follow-up questions if you want.
Yeah. So that's kind of what we wanted to touch on, not, not a huge deal here. Becky took most of our time today, but those are some of the figure issues.
People will know more next week.
The discussion.
Exactly.
Anyway, that's all I had.
Any other questions?
Oh, committee, I'm like, not looking at my agenda, I'm going to be behind it. Start with school.
Start.
Thank you, Carly.
Calendar committee rules be kicking off in January, just to kind of review and see where we're at. Kate, are you going to talk about policy?
I have them up if you want me to.
Perfect. And then my only other one is insurance. We had a really good meeting, we reviewed the progress that we are making so far this year in regards to claims. It's really interesting to look at kind of industry average versus where we are. We have, as you may assume, we have a very young female population, so most of our claims have to do with pregnancy. And so that's expected and we take that into consideration. I also found it very interesting, the, the different things that we're always looking for new ways to promote wellness. So whether that's the number of gym sessions that our employees can attend every month or now offering some diabetic education classes for people who are maybe identified as pre-diabetic to try to prevent them from getting to that chronic illness stage. Really looking at, they have a whole wealth of ideas, but they don't want to just throw, hey, if you do these five things, they really want to look at what is our population here in the Midwest and, and for a school district and for the people that we employ, what is the most meaningful to actually get an improvement on their health? So overall, it was a very good report as far as where we're at financially and looking at potentially being able to do some premium holidays if we continue on the same path that we're on now. The general is always a welcome gift to our staff, so it's a good meeting.
I would just add to the insurance meeting that we did do the claims paid analysis that was quite thorough and in-depth. And Hades Group had projected year-to-date, we'd be And Hades Group had projected year-to-date, we'd be at, um, nine point five, um, million for claims. We're at nine point two. So that means ninety percent or ninety-six percent of paid claims, um, to expected claims, which that's a benefit to the, the members is part of the view. The other committee that I sit on is Education Foundation Committee. Um, there of significance are several things, one of which is the fifty thousand dollar grant that we, we received from Verizon, corporate, and that was, um, in part, uh, for recognition of five G, which is being brought to our city, which is one of the only in the country. And the fifty thousand dollar grant is to be used specifically for, um, STEM, um, curriculum, uh, to go learning and science. So that is just fantastic. It is. And that overall just plays into the larger picture here. That the fundraising goal, um, uh, for, uh, the foundation was a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The percent completed is a hundred and thirty-five percent. So that really just speaks to, um, a lot of energy and thought and intentionality that the foundation has placed on increasing the, the endowment, which they have a million dollar goal. So their, the trajectory is headed, um, in the right direction. Um, the endowment goal for this particular year was a hundred and thirty thousand. So the percent completed was at ninety-seven, um, point three-six percent. So the trajectory is heading in the direction we want it to. And just a reminder that we do have the public school proud event, um, this Thursday, um, from six to nine at Raven. At this point, we have thirteen thousand, seven hundred dollars in sponsorships. That doesn't include ticket sales, uh, but there have been the ROI on that particular event is, looks really good for the foundation. So, um, thanks.
Hi, uh, Paul C. We've got four policies coming up for reunion, which, um, energy, conservation, student transportation, private, school and private, business and personal. In there, um, really massive, um, the couple that didn't have any changes in, in the two institutions. Half, uh, didn't leave last month. Um, ASBSD, I'll be out here next Friday for the delegate assembly. And then Chamber, we had the, uh, annual event last year. They're still, they do have a new, um, membership coordinator. It was Heidi. She started. And then, um, there's still, we should know in the next couple of weeks who the new ones are. Uh, which it will be. Working on that process still. Budget we have not met. Uh, Smokey Leadership Council did not meet in October. A meeting coming up this month and, uh, I afford the housing is meeting through that meeting. Uh, and mention education. Thank you.
I'll go as fast as I can. Um, Safe and Secure School, um, that was a fascinating meeting. Uh, the reunification exercise was successful. There's a few things that, uh, maybe can be tweaked, but overall what a, what a great success that was. Budget, nothing. ASBSD, I'm on board. I'll do Thursday. I'll do what I can, but then it gets dumped on the delegation on Friday. So we'll see what we can do. Housing, working on, um, getting a committee as one instead of two. So, and helping try to, uh, put that together. Sports Authority, the, um, the marathon was down about three hundred people this year. Um, maybe change date to Labor Day next year to get more people involved. Still making a new twenty-two bids to NCAA events, including a couple of division ones. We'll see what happens. Doesn't hurt to trouble you of everything that we need other than the ten pulsus hotels. And who knows what will happen in the next couple of years. Uh, I think that's.
Thank you. So, um, emotionally, do you, the mood?
All those in favor signify for Cynthia.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Southeast Tech next. Right at fourth. Thanks.